Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me now? Right, well, thank you all very much for coming tonight. It's good to see so many Thetford residents interested in this important issue. My name is Louis Basutin and I'm going to be chairing this meeting. I have a number of people who've asked to speak. And they are Carla Barretto, Rodney Thompson, Sally Ludford, Linda Rolfe, Kirsty and Rob, Geoffrey Reeve, Luke Hollins. Also, there we go. Is that better? That's right. Shortly, I'm going to ask Lana Hemsworth to my immediate right to open with a description of the twenty-minute neighbourhoods issue, which I know you're all very interested in. I've also, to the right of Lana, we have your Thetford County councillors. The noise will take. That's it. Can you hear that? Okay. Your Thetford County councillors are here, who are Terry Germy from Thetford West and Jane James from Thetford East. Jane is also the mayor of Thetford and she is our host this evening. Thank you very much, Jane, for inviting us. And to Jane's right, we have Tom Cave, who is the head of paid service for Norfolk County Council. So he's kind of like the chief executive of the civil servants. He's shaking his head, but he's certainly responsible for the Norfolk County Council people. And we're very grateful to him for him to attend. To my left, I have Bob Sains, I have Thetford resident Jeff Mealing, Brian Rees and Thetford resident Mike Ball. We're hoping you can have... You will be hearing from Mike Ball tonight. And in fact, you'll be hearing from anyone who wants to speak on this issue. We want your voices heard. This is an opportunity for the residents of Thetford to engage with their county councillors. I do ask, please, that we keep this meeting civil, that there are no outbursts, there's no finger jabbing or shouting or heckling. If you do want to speak, please go to the lectern over there and pick up the mic. I hope that mic is going to be working. And catch my eye and I will call on you to speak. Also, if any of the people to my left or to my right want to speak, they will raise their hands and I will call on them to speak. But to start things off, I'd like to call on Lana Hemsworth. Over to Jane first. Okay, so first of all, to our mayor, mayor of Thetford, Jane James.
Thank you. Hopefully, you can all hear me. Good, excellent, thank you. So, welcome, as committed to at that last town council meeting, where we had to reconvene because we were overwhelmed by numbers in the council chamber. This meeting has been organised for you, the residents of Thetford, and to meet the representatives of Norfolk County Council and engage in dialogue, understanding and come together behind, the understanding of the theory behind this particular idea, and it is very much an idea at the moment, and pose your questions so that we can understand both views. I look forward to constructive dialogue with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Now to Lana Hemsworth, who is county councillor for April in Norfolk.
Interesting, can everybody hear me without too much into that? Better, much better. See, I told you this would be a good start. Right, so my name's Lana Hemsworth. I am the county councillor division member for April and my role at the county council is specifically member champion for sustainable transport. What I want to set out first of all is, I've watched the videos, I've seen the reaction that's happened online, I have followed a lot of the comments. And what I'd really like us to ascertain first of all is that we are all here. I am, I am. We're all here because we've chosen to be here, right? I mean, I have a family and a home. I have other things that I do on a Thursday evening and so do all of you. And yet, we've all chosen to be here because what we're discussing this evening is important to you, to your county councillor and to Mike. Sorry, I can't remember your names, but it's important to you all. And that's why we're all here. So regardless of what's been said so far, can I just have a quick show of hands? Because this matters to me right now. Who is here against restrictions on civil liberties and movement? That would be me. Yeah, thank you. Who here, second show of hands, who here would like to see more facilities, better local cohesion and more community engagement for Thetford? So I think we're starting from a good place because everyone here in this room believes in the same things. It's what underpins the reason we are all here. What you don't know about me, because it's not visible, is, and you probably would have picked up, is that I'm registered blind. I was also brought up in former Yugoslavia, which is, you may say, a communist regime or socialist regime. Either or, it does not promote and never did the same civil liberties as it did here. When I was diagnosed with my side condition, I was told that A, I should forget about going to university because people like me don't get educated; B, I should never get married because people who have congenital conditions that they're going to pass on to their children should never have children; and C, if I was going to support myself, they were going to teach me how to weave baskets and that's it. I have spent all of my life since then standing up for rights and emancipation and civil liberties, not just for disabled people, but everybody. And that's why the concept of the twenty-minute neighbourhood is so important to me. When my husband and I moved to Norfolk, we were looking for a community where I could live an independent life, where I wouldn't have to rely on him or anybody else to get around and to look after our three children. And we found this really special place called April in Norfolk. In April, for those of you who have been, I can walk to the shop, I can walk to the pharmacy, I have a doctor, I have a preschool, I have a high school, I have a primary school, I have a recreation centre, library, everything within a ten-minute walk from my home. And this place is somewhere that I've been able to thrive independently and so have my children. And forgive me for wanting the same or similar for all residents of Norfolk. Because I believe that you deserve better community services and more local services. What I have found, what I have found in my time as a local councillor, is that the way the planning system works encourages suburban sprawl to the extent where everybody is forced to use their cars because the distances from the new developments to the town centre are too big for people to manage comfortably on foot. So we all end up in our cars. And that was great back in the eighties, right? Or nineties, when fuel was cheap and it wasn't a problem. But right now, I think you'll agree, we are all facing really serious issues with the price of fuel, with the price of heating, with the price of electricity. And I think it's now important that we start building, and that's why this twenty-minute neighbourhood thing is also here in front of you, is that we start thinking about how we can shape communities moving forward in a way that doesn't force us into cars, that forces us to think about what we can do and perhaps choose, like we've all chosen to be here today, choose a way of life that actually supports us in a better way. So the twenty-minute neighbourhood thing, and you will have heard because I've explained to the press on many occasions, it came from an invitation that I received to the Disabled Citizens Inquiry at the Theatre Royal last summer. And I was in a room at the Theatre Royal with a number of wheelchair users. And in one of the breakout sessions, it was proposed to me, what do you think about this twenty-minute neighbourhood proposal? This would mean that the disabled people would be able to access their main services, they'd be able to access the shop, the doctor, the pharmacy, everything that they need on a daily basis with an easy ten-minute there, ten-minute back.
I can't get into the doctors. You can't get into the doctors.
Try getting into the doctors.
Precisely. Hold on, hold on, hold on. And the reason for, so I said, let's explore this because I bet that there are not many communities in Norfolk at the moment that enable you to live like this, and there are not. So I worked with officers, I'm speaking, I worked with officers.
Order, please, order. I can see that there are two speakers waiting to speak and they will get their microphones and they will have the opportunity to ask questions and make their own points. But please do not interrupt the speakers. Lana?
Yeah, thank you, Louis. So at that meeting, I offered, I offered in my role as a county councillor, to develop this concept of a twenty-minute neighbourhood that would support disabled people, that would support local residents and that would build resilience into communities in terms of local services to ensure that people weren't forced into cars, that people would have a choice to either walk, wheel or cycle to their local amenities. And that's where this motion comes from. And that's where the motion that was put to Norfolk County Council on the 31th of December last year, that's where it comes from. Now, many of you would have read that motion and you'd thought, that sounds a bit vague. You know, I've had mine, you know, it doesn't say much. And do you know why that is? That motion is a backbench motion. I'm not in the cabinet, I'm not a primary decision maker. I'm merely a backbench county councillor who put forward an idea that I thought would benefit people in Norfolk. Norfolk County Council, we face a sixty million budget deficit. I could not tie the council down to expenditure with specific plans of how to implement this. But what I did say is that we will work with Transport East, the subnational transport body for the east of England, and other stakeholders, which includes town councils, which includes borough councils, which includes you, to ensure that whatever was proposed worked for everybody else. Now, where I would like to take this moving forward is on the 1st of June this year, Active Travel England, please feel free to Google it. Chris Boardman, the former Olympic cyclist, is on the commissioning panel for Active Travel England. On the 1st of June this year, Active Travel England becomes a statutory consultee for all major planning applications in this country. What I would like to see is to make sure that whatever Active Travel England say about development in Norfolk actually has some relevance to what we need here. It is actually meaningful for a rural county like we are. It is meaningful for a county that depends on cars day in, day out, for people to get about. Because with the best will in the world, the bus network isn't developed enough. With the best will in the world, you've got a train station here and it's an amazing service up and down to Norwich, but it doesn't take you everywhere. With the best will in the world, we are a rural county and we need our cars and we need to get around. So I need to make sure that Active Travel England understand what infrastructure we have in place and what we need moving forward. And that's why it's important that this motion is on the cards at Norfolk County Council, that it underpins what we need as a county to enable us, within reason, to walk, cycle or wheel, get around in a wheelchair in a place that depends on cars for its economy to thrive. I'm going to leave it there because there's going to be questions. But that's it.
Okay, thank you, Lana.
It's not about restrictions. It's not about restricting civil liberties. It's about helping communities be healthier and have more community cohesion.
Thank you, Lana, very much appreciate you setting the scene there. Now, one of your local county councillors, Terry James, has caught my eye. And I'd like to talk to Terry, Terry Germy, I beg your pardon. I think I've just married you to the mayor, sorry about that. Terry Germy would like to speak.
Thank you very much and thank you, everyone, for coming this evening. And I just want to be, to start off really by being very clear on where things are at at the moment. Now, there has been no decision made to implement twenty-minute neighbourhoods anywhere in Norfolk, including here in Thetford. And Jane and I, at a public council meeting, Norfolk County Council on Tuesday, we both separately asked a question to the leader of Norfolk County Council, who categorically confirmed no decisions have been made to implement this policy anywhere. Where we're at is members of the county council, as Lana has outlined, very briefly touched upon the issue at the county council meeting on the 13th of December. But it was not a green light to proceed, as has been suggested by some. The vote that was taken was not even an endorsement of the concept. Lana's motion, which was a good motion, was about reviewing twenty-minute neighbourhoods, particularly with a Norfolk context. Because when you hear about twenty-minute neighbourhoods, when you hear about lower-vision zones, it's very much your Bristols, your Cambridges, your Londons, your Bristols, you know, Oxford's, big cities, just won't work here in Norfolk, particularly here in Thetford. It takes me forty minutes to walk from one side of Thetford to the other. That motion received unanimous consent because it was about getting information. And on the whole, councillors like to get information before they make a decision, believe it or not. And so the motion sought to get information, information to do. And it is clear that twenty-minute neighbourhoods mean different things to different people. And what I hope that motion by being adopted will achieve is defining what it is, because it clearly does mean different things to different people. Now, let me be absolutely clear on my own position. If any introduction of a twenty-minute neighbourhood meant cars would be banned, as has been suggested, or fines or financial penalties introduced for using your car, as has also been suggested, then I believe this would be a non-starter. It would be illogical, it would be unenforceable and just plain wrong. If any future twenty-minute neighbourhood proposals for Thetford sought to restrict movement, impose fines or otherwise curtail personal freedoms, then I would be totally against and I would vote strongly against. And Jane James has said the same at the initial meeting. Now, what I am in favour of, and I think the vast majority of us are in favour of, is proposals that would enable people to access more services on foot or by cycle or by public transport. I want that choice and I think others want that choice too. Investment in services is badly needed. And one of the reasons people are now so reliant on cars is because services have been reduced. A really good example, the Cottage Hospital in Thetford, just down the road. Services that were once there, you now have to go to Beresham Edmonds to access. We need access to local services to reduce the reliance on cars. I'm all for encouraging people to walk more, to cycle more. The council should absolutely be enabling that and supporting that. But I am not in favour of forcing people out of their car and I don't believe this is what is being considered. I believe in personal choices and personal freedoms. And I want to be very clear on that. I think we're being encouraged to be against something which isn't even being proposed. And I hope that will come out in the debate this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I'd like to call on the first of the speakers of the lectern. Could you tell us your name and ask your question, make your point?
Yes, my name is Dennis Crawford. My question is, if this was to take place, what makes you think there's going to be any more infrastructure in Thetford than there is now? Why can't we have the infrastructure now without this being imposed upon us?
Yeah.
I think Lana would like to answer that.
Well, you'll know. So whenever development comes forward, for those of you, well, for us councillors anyway, we know that there's always a tug-of-war for something called Section 106 money, which is the part of the developer contribution that enables services. And that Section 106 money has to be distributed and paid for local homes, it has to pay for highways contributions and it has to pay for a whole host of things. Now, the way things have gone so far is that that balance is a tricky one. It really is. And those services are difficult to maintain and they're difficult to... It's a constant tug-of-war. But obviously, it's, sometimes it's really not fun being a councillor because keeping those services a place, especially when they are private services, like all GP practices are now private businesses, it's hard. It's really hard. And that's why, to me personally, on this issue, it's really good that Active Travel England are coming online with their statutory responsibility for planning consultation responses because they will glance over your large planning applications, 450 dwellings above you, and they'll be able to say if what is proposed in there is actually something that's going to support you in terms of walking and cycling and leaving. But it's a constant tug-of-war.
No, no, heckling, please, I think she is...
Can I reply to that quickly?
Okay, yes, sir.
Thank you. I've been a councillor since 2010. I've been a county councillor, I've been a district councillor and a town councillor. And we've always had to fight for 106 money. This is not going to increase the 106 money in any way. So I don't see any advantage to it at all. I think we need to have better infrastructure, but I can't see how this is going to improve it. So, thank you.
I'd like to call on Bob Sains, to my left, who's asked for speaking.
Right. So this is a question for Lana Hemsworth, really. On the 9th of March 2023, there was an article in the EDP stating that you came up with this idea and you've just backed it up. You said this was your idea to come up with a twenty-minute zone. Now, there's a hell of a lot of people in this room that have a very good understanding of geopolitics and they have a very good understanding of corporate infiltration into government, whether it be local or national. Now, my question to you is, if this was your idea, are you proud that your idea has actually gone worldwide?
Does that work? Yeah. Can I just say, I voted to leave the European Union? So I, yeah, so, no, no, okay, so I voted to leave the European Union and the reason for that was that I kind of believed in sovereignty of this country and sovereignty of our laws, et cetera. So the whole geopolitical thing, I'm really sorry, Bob, but I don't really know how that's relevant to what I propose. My idea came from specifically being in a room full of people in a wheelchair who will never be able to walk independently, who turned to me and said, look, as a local councillor, what can you do to help us live more independently? And that was one of their suggestions as to how we could enable communities to work better for them if they could have communities where they had everything on their doorstep. So I don't recognise the geopolitical, national topic because I don't actually think that my proposal went viral. I think what I've been hearing on the internet is something completely different went viral and that's what's been promoted. So I don't think that the model that I suggested at Norfolk County Council is one that you're referring to.
Okay, thank you, councillor. I have a speaker in the green. Could you please give us your name and ask your question, make your point?
My name is Steve Fogg. I've lived in this town all my life. Most of the subjects of passing questions for the show are answers. Collectors ask, who would like to buy my pint? Or who would like me to buy their pint by the show tonight? Can you raise your hand? People to raise their hands. So I've lived here all my life. In the past 20 years, I've worked in Cambridge. I have a 78 mile drive every day to and from that because there aren't skilled jobs in Thetford. As of last year, I have to drive to Norwich to see a dentist because there are dentist places in Thetford. I can see a GP by video. So what I'd like to know is how are these proposals, how are you going to improve on what we already have? Because it's appalling, it's such a, we've got 5,000 new homes in this town. Infrine council tax, I asked Breckland Council two years ago about services to go with that, such as nursery places, preschool places, primary school places, DPs, dentist's emergency services. And they declined to answer me until I nagged, and nagged, and nagged. And in the end, they asked me to submit a freedom of information request, which I did. And the answer to that was, it's not up to us, it's up to those individual providers to provide those services. But Breckland are still taking the council tax from 5,000 new homes. The way I understand the economics, if there's more people contributing for the same level of service, it should go down, but it just has a 5% influence. So what are we going to do? And also, I would like to say, I have a disabled friend who saw me in the crowd in the video from the last meeting and she messaged me and said, "If they take away my car, how will I get to my hospital appointments?" So the disabled thing, there's two sides to that story. But that's more a statement than a question. Maybe anybody would like to elaborate on that. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, sir. Which has been asked by Bob Sallis for an opportunity to come back from Lana's response of the Q.
Yeah, obviously, what it is, is that you've clarified again, it was your idea because of the disabilities and what have you. Are you actually aware of the fact that there's towns in the United Kingdom and in Europe and across the world that seem to have instigated exactly the same restrictive measures which have resulted in fines and restrictions in travel and what have you? Now, you said that there will be no restrictions in travel, et cetera. The... What comes across on a personal opinion is that you have received the top-down order to place some kind of scheme before the council and it was announced in the EDP. We've lost it. Okay. So, yeah, so there seems to be a massive coincidence that this has been rolled out in Oxford and Canterbury and I think there's one in Scotland. There's Newcastle in Australia, there's Paris, all from one idea. Surely this is a top-down order.
Okay, Lana, have you been ordered from the top down to races in 350 grand?
I mean, thanks, Bob, thanks, Steve, for the answer. Just no. I haven't been ordered by anybody to...
Sorry, I didn't hear that either. If you want to make a point, please join the queue and address your questions to the chair. No heckling, please. Lana.
Who's this, Mike? Who's this, Mike? Oh, that's better, that's better. No, first of all, okay, I'm really fishing for snow, but the answer's just no. I didn't, I didn't, honestly, I didn't pick this up from the internet. I didn't, I haven't got anybody from the World Economic Forum in my contact list on my phone. I've never even heard of them. Like, seriously, I've never even... Actually. But seriously, you won't believe me, but right, so this all went, so when the EDP article came out in January and I read what was in there, I had to Google the vast majority of the accusations and, you know, most of them, I had to Google them. I'm really sorry, pardon my ignorance, Bob, but I had to Google what the World Economic Forum did. I had to, who's the other guy? Schwab, is that somebody? Yeah, I had to Google him and his...
It's no coincidence.
Completely.
It's not a coincidence.
Completely. But seriously, I don't know how to prove the maths and so on, but like, literally, I've never heard of them. Like, I've literally never heard of them and I had to Google it. And like, my Google history is now destroyed completely because I've gone to look at... Bob, I promise you.
So have you heard of Agenda 2030?
I have now. I have now. But it's not part of that, I'm serious. I have now.
Okay.
So, I really hate to disappoint you and you, Steve, but it's, I've never heard of it before. Never, never, never. You are sweet to have it.
Okay, I think Lana has answered that point. We move on to the ladies in red. If you're ready, I'll ask your question, make your point.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Carla Raiter. Some of you know me because I also sit as an independent councillor, an independent council human expert. When we had the previous meeting, which was overwhelmed by visitors, which I usually think is a great thing because that means people are interested in whatever's going on in town. So I always encourage people to take part and have a voice. And one thing that was raised and was some points about what's going on in other towns currently, Oxford being one of the examples, where some measures are being introduced that led to the restrictions, if you can call it that, and for people to be penalised if they travel further a few or more than a certain stipulation number of times. And some people indeed received fines or notifications regarding that. And I think that was part of the issue, was making a lot of people upset. They did not want that for Thetford. I, for once, don't want that for Thetford. I made that very clear, that I want for freedom of rights and freedom of, you know, people doing what they should do and moving back and forth. There should be no type of restriction whatsoever because it infringes the human rights, people not to be controlled. Yes, like Lana said, this is a sovereign country. I, on the other hand, did not have the option to vote to stay or to leave you, merely because I am a resident. Not that it makes much difference, but I do have to consider that our town is made of a lot of people from a lot of communities. And a lot of people who work, studies, produce their children, do their businesses and make their life together in Thetford as residents, as one people. Ultimately, I want what's best for all of Thetford, whether or not this may be somebody that's been living here with a brother of their family or have a full history here since they don't, or where somebody that shows Thetford and should come to settle because I thought it was a good place to build a life and to raise a family and to move into. The one question I have for Lana is, if you came up with the idea, where exactly did you base the concept? You just mentioned that you did not, you were not taught by hierarchy to follow this particular plan. My question is, where did you come up with the idea then and who else supported it at that time? And that is my question. And also, as a last point, if, you know, there's obviously two sides, two sides, conversant sides, there's the ones that do not want people, things to be restricted, which I mentioned and I fully agree. And that's, if anything would just go that way, my, whatever is worth my vote, I would answer it. I would never be affected by anything restricts anybody's right to do as a musician, move around. Even particularly as a rural area, they did raise a valid point. Even if you are disabled, you still need your car. We are in an area where everything is scattered around. The other last question I have is, what, it is best, let's put it this way, it is best to have the thing restructured first rather than asking the people what is needed. We all know what is needed. We need doctors, we need dentists, we need schools, et cetera. But what is already in the line-up? What is county council? What is the authority that's already doing? What's the plan to be doing, actually implement those infrastructures? Which schools are we getting? And when? By which deadline? Which doctors? Which new GP clinics are being built? Because ultimately, if they are being built and if they've been implemented on the local communities, that means people may have to travel around. It's illogical, in a cause and consequence. Let's put infrastructure in place rather than asking people whether or not they want to move further afield for it. People don't want to move further afield. People just want to think locally. And that, yes, they would be within a 20-minute area of moving around and facilitating people walking or cycling there. But that doesn't mean they're going to stop using their cars. That just means they ought to put it in place first and then hopefully the car use will reduce as a consequence of having the things locally. Thank you.
So the two questions were, what were the origins of this idea? What prompted you to initiate this study? And the second question was, what infrastructure plans are in the pipeline in order to support this?
Oh, right. But in terms of where it came from, I think I've explained that a few times.
Okay.
Again, it really was from that Disabled Citizens Inquiry that I attended. When it comes to infrastructure and what goes into it, as I said, I'm a member of the campaign for Sustainable Transport and with Transport East, which is your substantial transport body, I'm particularly involved with active travel. So where I'm hoping this will go is going to be particularly around infrastructure for walking and cycling because in Norfolk, I think Tom will back me up on this one, we haven't done terribly well with active travel funding in the past.
Yeah, I think she is addressing these questions. The call from the floor, Lana, was, what about doctors, shops and that kind of thing?
As I say, the 20-minute, I agree, we need all of those. But what I was proposing with the 20-minute neighbourhood motion is to do with the active travel infrastructure. I, yeah.
Do we have the other councillor?
Yeah, you can, of course. I'm just asking you a question.
Before we go to the other councillor, I'd like to call on Mike Ball to speak.
Yeah. Yeah, lovely, yeah. Okay. That's clearly, what's happening here is to be, from Michael, if you're just sitting and listening to it, we're batting the ball about and nobody's actually landing it in the net. What we need to do is land the ball in the net and very simply, because our primary concern, as I said tonight, is, are we going to have our vehicles restricted? Are we going to be imposed with fines? Are we going to have movements restricted? The infrastructure, not being funny, but we can discuss that. But we'll probably discuss that at future meetings or we can address it by logging on to the government website. So the point we think we need to note tonight is, when we leave here, that there is no imposition planned for Thetford. No matter what infrastructure we get, there's no imposition planned, no penalties planned, no AMPR cameras, no restrictions on movement and everything else. Who agrees with that? More about my opinion. So, very, very quickly, very quickly, we can land that ball in the back of the net. Our Norfolk County Council prepared to issue a letter outlining that there will be no impositions, no restrictions, no fines, no movement orders, et cetera, et cetera, whilst they carry out the trial town for Thetford for a 20-minute neighbourhood. If you are, then to be honest with you, if you do that and you document it and you send it through live, we're on ITV, we're on Rebel News, we're on YouTube, whatever. If you're prepared to do that, which, you know, hopefully Tom will be able to say in a minute and make that decision, or tell us how he's going to make that decision. But if we get that answer tonight, then that really has put our minds at rest. Because we can be here and we go, well, what doctors are we going to get? What dentist? Listen, that goes to planning. Nobody knows that. What are you going to have for dinner tomorrow? Well, nobody knows. Do you know what I mean? And that's a simple one. So all we need really is reassurance that we aren't going to be in the same position Oxford are, which I've got to be honest, is in a poor position. But I understand the concerns and mine is one of them because we were in a similar position pre-election, post-election. Pre-election, Oxford, no, 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 we never do that to you, never do that to you. Post-election, Oxford, yeah, sorry about that. Deal with it. And we don't want to be in that position. So this is what we need to do. So I'll hit the ball. Hopefully it will go in the back of the net. Our Norfolk County Council prepared, on this occasion, if we accept that we're going to be a trial town, to confirm without a doubt that no impositions on vehicles, no restrictions on movements, no penalties, no fines, no AMPR cameras, we can carry on our lives exactly as it was and effectively, from Lana's point of view, disabled people's lives get better. If that is acceptable to everybody here tonight, then the meeting really can, it doesn't need to go on for much longer than that. If the Norfolk County Council are to agree to that. So that's all we need, but we need it in written confirmation. Because I have to be honest, we, over the last three years, have lost trust. We've lost trust in the system. We, as a nation, have been lied to. I'm not saying Norfolk County Council, because you were following orders, but from a government point of view, from a London point of view, it's all becoming clear now. We have been labelled conspiracy theorists. There's a fine line, I believe, between a conspiracy theorist and a prophet. Because pretty much everything we came out with is now becoming true. But we're still labelled as conspiracy theorists because it's easier to undermine and discredit than it is to listen. And as Mark Twain said, quite rightly, it's easy to fool a person, but very difficult to convince a person they've been fooled because you're up against pride. So if Norfolk County Council will accept that responsibility to send a letter through to every resident, and I mean every resident, they can't miss people out, every resident, whether on the electoral register or not, they're going to have to sort that through. But every resident gets a letter to say that you will be not restricted, no movement, et cetera, et cetera. I think that's clear what I'm asking. To address that question. Mike, really happy to address that absolutely straight on. There is no plan. There is no plan for Thetford. There is no plan to restrict ANPRs and whatever in Thetford at all. Ever. Oh, never say that. Because... There we go! So I was listening to Bob. We've got, we've got traffic restrictions, restrictions on the... I'm not really, there's double yellow lines outside where we can't park. There's one-way streets, there's pedestrian bits. That's all, you know, was one of your videos, that's all consent. And that's the thing. So a good story is, two, three years ago, Terry and Roy Brien, I think, were the county councillors. And people might remember, there was a tragic accident when there was a gentleman killed on one of the roads into the town, in a 40 mile an hour zone on this. And there was a, you know, quite rightly, a ground swell of opinions saying, that's too fast. Terry, Roy, went to the county council, said, "We want the speed limits reduced." And it didn't happen overnight. It wasn't, I don't know what to say, 18 months, a couple of years. And we managed to reduce that to 30 miles an hour. There isn't a plan. Before you had your meeting, Mike, it was a month ago. We'd only spent literally a couple of hours talking to Lana about this. There isn't a big team designing 20-minute neighbourhoods for Norfolk. What people have done in Cambridge, in Oxford, the mayor's low emissions zone in London, they can do what they want to do in London. I don't see a low emissions zone in Thetford in my lifetime. So I can categorically state, there is no plan to restrict movements, those liberties, people getting in and out with their private car to school, to hospital, zero plan. Absolutely categorically.
So can you use your evidence statement?
And Tom, do you think you're prepared to send a letter to me, President, of Thetford just so that we could get that confirmed? You might, I can send a letter to the town council, to something like that. It's, I might find myself on YouTube. I've said it, I'm quite happy to put something in writing to the town council, to the mayor, copy you in, so it can be shared. There isn't a plan. Okay, thank you. First of all, thank you, Tom. I appreciate your answer. Realistically, it's not for me to decide. You know, I'm a bit of a, I've been targeted as a leader of this. I'm not, I'm a member of the community, exactly the same as you are. Personally, I hear the answer and realistically, we've got, we're not going to get much better than that. You know, if I'm honest, I mean, Tom has answered it. And to be fair, he can't see the future. What he can see is the current future. So maybe, you know, I don't know about you, Les, but...
Okay, let's, before I take Lana's question, there's a lady in black who'd like to speak. Please give your name and ask your question, make your point.
Excuse me, my name is Dionne and I've been a Thetford resident since birth. Um, when I was born or since my childhood, I can remember twenty minute towns like Lana has described. Um, I could go to a play park, um, five minutes away. I could go to a post office that was just across the road to where I lived. Um, I could go to school, which is five minutes round the corner. People didn't have cars then and it was bliss. And over time, I've seen Thetford get bigger and facilities get smaller. And no member of the council has been able to draw funding down to cope with the population, uh, making it, um, that now we have to go out of town, people have to go out of town to get, um, services and access to schools and, um, dentists and doctors and that kind of thing. So I'm curious to know what is different about this and why have, uh, the council been unable to draw funding as we've grown, but suddenly there's funding available for this new proposal? What is different now than in the past?
So, so the, the first thing is, you know, I, I, I remember, you know, having two shops within walking distance of where I lived. Eh, there, there isn't the budgets for twenty minute towns. You, 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 so that, that's how, you know, have we used the term embryonic it is? It, it is fascinating and interesting, you say, you know, the population of Norfolk now is, is it, you know, nine hundred thousand and, and, and rising. Eh, you know, there, there is an under provision of, you know, GPs, dentists, you know, as we talked about. You, you, where does the county councils money go? Eh, about seventy-five percent of the county council's money goes on, eh, looked after children and adult social care. So we're, we're spending about seventy-five percent of our budget on about five percent of the population who needs a very intensive care. The remainder goes on everything from the fire service to highways to, 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 to libraries, et cetera. Eh, the, the NHS, you know, there was the survey this week, eh, people's satisfaction with it has never been lower. We're, we're, we're in a really difficult position. Eh, Mike says, it's, it's been, you know, it's been a hard three years. Hopefully the only way is up.
Thank you. Uh, for that, for that, Lana, speak. And then you say you want to speak.
What I'm hoping that this will do is, I, I spoke here about active travelling, but the way they become statutory entities, they also fund, um, active travel projects in Norfolk. And what I'd like to see is, because, you know, by, by actually putting some flesh on the bones of what we would like to see is that we more effectively draw down funding from active travel England. I, I guess what I was going to ask you, you know, moving forward, because, you know, Mike was quite clear, I mean, I hope what Tom said works for you. What would be quite nice for me, if you, I hope what's been clear is that this is so early on, is I'd, I'd really love to, you know, if you, if you guys are on the floor with, you know, building in this infrastructure into Thetford, is that perhaps, you know, we could have a meeting, you know, sometime in, in June, to talk about what you would like to have in Thetford.
Doctors?
No, no, in terms of, okay, so what I'm talking about specifically is the active travel infrastructure. So I can get the doctors, I can get everything else, but from a sustainable transport point of view, what I'm hoping to draw down, as I said, is the active travel.
There's no buses after six P M.
So, but that's my question. Ooh, Stein, are you the author of that?
Yeah, I've got to be honest, I mean, one of my suggestions was that we have a working, uh, a, a review group of, uh, community members that work alongside the council so that we can actually see the transparency and see the plan developed. And I think it would be very beneficial to have a working group from the community working with the council about a trial within our town. And yeah, I can't see a problem with that. I, you know, a meeting coming down here and having a one-on-one and then I'll go back to the, I think we need a, a, a working committee or, um, a, a, a peer review group set up in the council, uh, sorry, set up in the community here. They would need to be chosen, they would need to be elected, et cetera, et cetera, and it would be, need to be done properly. It'll just come down to a chat and a meeting.
Could we please move on to the next speaker from the floor, the gentleman in black? Once again, give us your name and.
Hello, uh, my name is Rob Thompson. Really, what I'm trying to do here is try to give the council a sense of why a great many of these people here, um, speak calm, uh, about your mental conspiracy theory, um, rubbish to many hundreds of concerned people, calling them demaxes, hard right wiggers, tin hatters, et cetera. Um, I would also have high respect for what the council do and I know April very well. I've lived in Little Plumstead for a great many years. It's a lovely little place. It would be nice to have lots of little apes in Thetford, um, equalising time and space, but I don't think Einstein could crack that one. Um, what I want to refer to, some of the background to, uh, some articles in the recent Telegraph, the well-known tin hatters. Oxford concealed key climate zone data. Oxford Council choose covered up that data and rejectedizing its highly controversial climate zones, which will ban residents from travelling directly between suburbs. Um, Tory councillors are very demanding that the Labour Litver Green Coalition return to the drawing board, criticizing them for acting like masters who are roaming through climate ideas in a democracy free zone. Um, it goes on a great length, the, the activities that they have brought in order to do this and in actual fact, uh, failed to disclose that their plans would actually create, yes. No, I'm not saying that's going to happen here, but I want you to understand why a great many of these people here are suspicious and why they are not prepared to just take your word for it. Anyway, it gets better, uh, going back to conspiracy theories. This is the Daily Telegraph again, the well-known tin hatters. Net Zero is a Trojan horse for the destruction of Western life. Now, these are larger issues that are now reaching the mainstream press. And I think it's in the back of mind for a lot of the, uh, audience here, perhaps not everyone, but certainly Bob's on board with this. Um, so it's not so much a question, it's more trying to help you understand why.
Okay, thanks, sir. The man in the jacket there. Again, please give your name and make your point.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name's Craig, uh, moved back from London, that good thing is I don't love Thetford. Um, there was a lot of talk about infrastructure earlier on. Now, I'd like to ask all the councillors, how much money out of the public purse has been taken to put up the Philips smart lighting that we see everywhere? Because if you know anything about the Philips smart lighting and the capabilities of it, then you will understand that the prison's already been built around us. And this comes from a lot higher than what everybody's been made to believe. So is, is there a price tag on how much the, will the street lights cost? Could that have been used on doctors, dentists, services for people?
You, you were saying, uh, street lighting?
Yes.
Yes, so, so we spend, the county councils, we've got sixty, seventy thousand street lights probably across.
Which all started going up through the lockdown.
No, no, we've had street lights in Norfolk for, you know, we're meant to be as advanced as London.
No, no, but these, these new street lights, the smart lights, which is part of the smart city network.
Well, yeah, so, so we, we've been doing LED lights in Norfolk for probably about seven, eight years. So those are low electricity, you know, like you do at home.
So, so they're not the Philips street lights that link up, that are actually on the World Economic Forum website?
Eh, eh.
Are part of the proposed smart cities.
So, so, eh, what I can tell you about the LEDs that we have is, yes, they're all linked up to each other so someone can sit in County Hall.
And, hello.
Eh, someone can sit in County Hall and turn the lights off or down. We have timers on them so that they dim at midnight and, and, and light up again.
And they can also record you, eh, your movement, uh, track you.
No, no, there, there are street lights.
Um, I think you're unaware of that.
Yeah, but, but that's different from CCTV.
Uh, they're all part of passing the same thing. They're all part of the smart city network. When you start digging deep and start having a look into this, it's all part of the same construct.
So, so all, all I can tell you is, you know, what we're doing is, we, we have a rated, eh, probably about sixty, seventy percent of our street lights from the old sodium lights that people will remember, used to be orange. We now have a much, eh, you know, whiter LED street light. They are, they're smart lights, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so.
But they, but they don't, they don't record, they, they don't record images.
Oh, so you're unaware of the full capabilities of these things?
I, I, I've got CCTV cameras, you know, but th- these aren't cameras.
They're not cameras.
These are, these are lights, street lights. So we'll tell you what.
Can we move on to the next question?
Good evening, I'm Kirsty Robb. Um, that would probably put pace what I was about to say, which I consider myself to be a relatively intelligent human being, can't operate a microphone, but I am a relatively intelligent person with an IQ slightly higher than that of a parsnip. Um, with that in mind, only just, but with that in mind, what I would like to ask is, as Dionne mentioned earlier, I thought that was a really valid point. I love Thetford, I'm very proud of my hometown. I used to love it. Thetford was a place of community. We used to have May Day parades. We used to be able to walk into the town, buy anything from a jar of coffee to a three-piece suite. We had banks, we were really spoiled. We hadn't, oh, no, no, we didn't have an abundance of charity shops and estate agents. It was a thriving town. I remember getting into Abbey Farm Estate with my grandmother on a busy bus. You remember the busy bus? Yeah? Um, out of, out of everybody here, do you all remember going on to the housing estates, Pine Close, St John's, Abbey Farm? Any of these housing estates and being able, as Dionne pointed out, to go to a post office, to go to a primary school, to go to a park, to be able to facilitate these things? We had that infrastructure in place. It was in place. So what I'm curious, curious to find out, if you're telling us that this is in such an embryonic state at the moment and it is just a proposal, I'm willing to accept that. I'm willing to understand and accept that it's going to take time to construct. What I don't understand, with that in mind, everything that you've stated so far this evening, you haven't answered any of the questions, not one. You've mentioned, not one, with respect, with the very greatest respect, thank you for sharing your life story with us. That's great, I'm very grateful for doing that. And I don't mean that in a derogatory way or patronizing way, I'm grateful that you have made yourself a human being. Thank you for sharing that with us. However, every person in this room can do the same thing. What you haven't done is get to the nitty-gritty of it and tell us the answers to our questions. I want to know, you mentioned that you cancelled down the forty mile an hour restrictions on the Norwich Road. I completely and wholeheartedly support that decision. What I do not support is that you did it without changing any street signage, any street signage. You then imposed fines on people for breaking those speed restrictions. I appreciate that the highway code says that it's a thirty mile an hour zone in a restricted area, in a residential area. I appreciate that, but you had set a precedent for many, many, many decades of forty miles an hour to change it overnight. The people of Thetford found out about that on Thetford forum. That's just gross incompetence. So now with the greatest respect, thank you, with the greatest respect, your words therefore, that you can categorically assure us that this is not going to impact our movements or restrict our movement, and yes, I might a less, but I can only do it for now, not the future. I'm sorry, it carries no weight. Nothing you have done so far and left here was a progressive, supportive, authoritative, and it's absolutely appalling. Absolutely appalling. I would be very pleased to see the likes of Mike Thor. I would be very pleased to see the likes of a lot of the people in this town, who are passionate about it. So many things have happened in this town where profits have gone missing. Who asked for the twenty thousand pounds to be spent on pretty little lights in the market square? Seriously, it's an abomination and honestly, I'd, I'd love to have some answers to those questions.
Yeah, I'll try and pick a few of those up in, in one go if I can. Um, firstly, Dionne, you grew up in the same estate as I did, I remember. It is an irony, isn't it? Because the whole concept of twenty minute neighbourhoods is what we used to have, you know, estates with shops in the middle and you could walk to the industrial estate. And it's true, lots of those services have gone, um, for a variety of reasons. Some of it is about funding, but also some of it is about changes in people's lifestyles. Pine Close shops, I remember growing up, vegetable shop, butchers, people go to same stuff now. There's no market for small independent shops because people's shopping habits have changed. The whole culture around going to your local convenience store has changed and quite goodness, we've still got, eh, a few sort of say in there. Um, but there are other challenges too. And Tom spoke about adult social care. When I first joined Norfolk County Council ten years ago, the total budget spend on adult social care was forty percent. The fact that it's now gone up past fifty percent, sixty percent, seventy, seventy percent, we have got to address some big challenges in this country about how we fund council services. And one of the biggest is adult social care. Any council who has a responsibility to provide care for the elderly is struggling financially because we're all getting older. Norfolk particularly is a county where there's a lot of older people, eh, and, you know, we're living longer, eh, and that is expensive. And that is a national challenge which is impacting us here in Thetford and, eh, in Norfolk and inevitably filters down to Thetford, filters down to other council services. Um, one of the biggest issues we've got is the current government is too complicated. We have a town council, we have a district council, we have Norfolk County Council, we have Flagship Housing Association, we have all sorts of different organisations responsible for different things, eh, different budgets, and we've absolutely got to sort the governance structure out. Perhaps a directly elected mayor for Norfolk, a directly elected police commissioner we've already got. It is a very complicated mess and it is expensive. Um, these, these are, these are all, eh, some of them exist, some of them are proposed. Dentists, I hear time and time again, the challenges of getting a dentist. Why I have to drive my own mother to Brandon to access a dentist? And if any of you are, eh, enrolled on, eh, dentistry in Brandon, you would have heard this week that that's going too. Not because of funding. The, the issue with dentistry in Thetford is not because of funding, it is a national issue about the inability to recruit dentists. Some of our challenges are about funding, but dentistry specifically is more about the inability to recruit dentists. National problem impacts us here in Thetford. Uh, the chap that spoke about being suspicious of councils, I completely understand that. I completely understand you being suspicious of councillors, of councils. I think a degree of scepticism is very useful. Jane and I are your two Norfolk County councillors for Thetford. I have had one phone call and one email about twenty minute neighbourhoods. I am more than happy for anybody to ring me, to email me, to sit down and talk to me about your concerns. I have a surgery every two weeks where you can come and see me, you can email me. We have a town council meeting for council every single month. Those of us that are councillors in Thetford are just as passionate about you are. I was born here, I want to see Thetford's pride. I was born here, I want to see Thetford's pride, I want to see these services addressed and the challenges addressed. We had a two-hour meeting on Tuesday for council last Tuesday of the month where we debated lots of these issues. And a really good example, Kirsty, um, forty, forty mile an hour zones. We said on Tuesday, Norfolk County Council absolutely dropped the ball when they changed the speed limit from forty to thirty. It wasn't deliberate, in my opinion, it was, if I may, pop-up rather than conspiracy. They took the forty mile an hour signs down and, eh, they should have had much clearer communication. Jane and I both said that as your county councillors, eh, to make it clearer that those changes were coming. But my plea to all of you is work with your elected representatives, whoever they are. Jane and I are different political parties, there's all sorts of colours and shades on the town council. We all want what's best for Thetford, some of us might agree, disagree on how we might get there, but we all want what's best. Work with us to try and improve Thetford, thank you.
Okay, thank you, I have a question. On, eh, on Mike, you, eh, address the issue of, eh, time there.
Hello, my name is Dave Vallow, I've been sitting here listening to what you had to say. You turned around and indicated that you've got no plans of putting barriers up, you've got no plans of putting cam- cameras up to see whether people go out in certain zone areas. So if we look at Oxford, just on a trial, why have they got the barriers and why have they got the cameras to watch people go out in zone areas, and why are they still, eh, being fined for actually doing that?
Okay, I, I think, um, well, with, with respect, this isn't about Oxford and, and I don't think anyone.
No, obviously, but what I'm trying to indicate is, if it's already there and you want to bring it to Thetford, surely that must be indicated if you want.
No, I don't, I don't think they do want to bring the Oxford. So, you, I, I'm quite happy to beg your pardon, the technology is there, we, we've got ANPR cameras, the police have been using ANPR cameras for years. The, 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 the thing is, there has to be, and I'll use the consent word again, so another good example, if you're introducing a residence parking scheme, I don't think there's any money in, eh, in Thetford. Whenever you're doing that, what you're saying is, you create a zone and you say it'll only be residents allowed. So in Norwich city centre, there's quite a few of them, it's only residents from this area who can park on the streets. Eh, so it's to stop commuters wherever, parking there. What we do is we have a public consultation, effectively a vote, because what you're doing is you're saying to people, I'm going to restrict parking on your residential streets. Eh, there's advantages for you because it means as a resident, you've got a chance of getting parking space. But if, if the local community don't want a resident's parking, if, if the public consultation goes against it, then it doesn't happen because you, you need that consent. And again, you, as and when we begin to draw, eh, ideas for, for, for twenty minutes, eh, you'll make neighbourhoods. It's, you, you need to have that consent with it, and I think that would be a good safeguard. Eh, and there may well be areas in Norwich that want a twenty-minute neighbourhood. A who might want a twenty-minute neighbourhood, but if Thetford says that not over, not mine, Ellie, that's Thetford's right to say, we don't want it. You stop it.
You're indicating that in twenty minutes, it's like saying ten minutes you vow to walk to anywhere you want to get what you need and ten minutes to walk back to your home, is that correct?
That's kind of genuine, I support a twenty-minute neighbourhood and, um, I mean, one of, like, one of the people that have contacted me since this been public, it is an organisation called Shopper's Open Book, because they represent local shoppers and local businesses. And I guess that being the hinge of the change of our shopping habits, like Tom said and Terry said, it's, it's, it's not about restrictions, it's about building that choice in and to make sure that the active travel infrastructure is baked into any new development moving forward. This is not about restricting you. And you know, my office does stand out for anything moving forward, it's, I'd actually got, you know, me, you and mine conceive, um, you know, just to, to bottom it out, what you would specifically like to see in Thetford, because, you know, as Tom said, it's not a size fix law. And, and most certainly, as I said, it's not about restrictions, it, it can't be about restrictions, this is a, you know, this is a free country.
Well, my, my other question is whether you're, for instance, you indicate that you want people to walk more, you want people to ride their bikes, but people are doing that now, so what is the point of this twenty minutes? If it's for people's freedom, people have already got the freedom, they don't need this twenty minutes. So what is the point of all the twenty minutes when people are already doing what we've indicated of cycling, walking, people with wheelchairs being able to get around, you know, what is the point of the twenty minutes then if people already do it?
Okay, well, the point is, is to get perhaps, uh, more segregated cycle routes in so that cycling is, yeah, so that cycling becomes safer than it is right now.
We can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Use the, use the other mic.
Close it.
No, use the other one, it works.
Right, can you hear me now? It works when I stand up, okay. So the active travel money is, is money that is specifically designed for modes of active travel, which means walking, cycling, wheeling. We haven't had enough active travel investment in Norfolk full stop for a while. And this twenty-minute neighbourhood concept will hopefully promote more investment into Norfolk so that we get our fair share of government investment into active travel into Norfolk. It's not about, it's about giving everybody choice.
Okay, thank you, Barbara, I think that was, you may, eh, I'm going to ask Mike to comment on theirs and then I'll go to the gentleman.
There might be two or three things that I want to say. First things, I'm really glad this has been filmed, um, the reason being for that is the generations that are actually going to benefit from the infrastructure, because it's going to take that long, will be able to look back and see how we discuss their future. Because it's obviously going to be about a hundred years, I'm shit mad, section one of six. We've got sixty million deficit, I've got to be honest, that's not a good position to go for a loan for, is it? I'm sixty million in the debt, but I want to borrow some more money, got to be honest, maybe I haven't worked with Rishi. He's got a little bit of money there, hasn't he?
Yeah.
Maybe he'll dig his hand in his pocket, Klaus Schwab that you've never heard of, he might be worth a call. Sixty million quid deficit, so we now know that our generation's in future, it was a good time, it become a bad time. Hopefully now when you're watching this, it's a better time for you, and you've got doctors and the dentists. Regarding your, Terry mentioned about only a one email and a couple of bits, I've got to be honest, my inbox is full, but people trust me. And I just, I just see that this is, thi- this whole plan, if I was you, I'd scrap it until you're in a position to give it a little bit of depth, because what we've got is, in the nicest possible way, at the minute, we've just spent the whole evening being narcissistic to disabled people. Because what we're telling them is what we want to give them, but you're not going to get it just yet. And I'm, but that's what we've done really, to be honest, I'm a bit frustrated this week and I thought it was going to go better, really from my point of view. It's, you've come down here and Kirsty's right in the way, eh, you've skirted around the answers, we've found out a life story. We know further forward. Terry touched on devolution in his little speech about Grand Poobah Mayor. Um, we need to bring everything in from London, let's bring it all in from London and, and have, that's devolution, why don't you just be honest? Is, can you be honest? We had a devolution meeting here, we had a devolution meeting here, you've already agreed devolution. Brett Glenda pulled out the legal challenge, do you think we're stupid people? Do you think I'm a stupid person, let's make it more specific, because if you do, I'll challenge you, I'll challenge you definitely. Than you could ever, ever wish for, a hundred percent. And on that note, on that, on that note, I've got a little old, Bob's got a little, eh, announcement, if we can, please. I'm sure she was out there with you for my speech.
Hey, so, eh, so this whole thing has been born out of a, a few tin hatters that used to meet up, um, on the green, by the river, called Standing Park, all right? So we've got ourselves together and thought with, eh, a couple of knowledge, what's going on. So off the back of that and the announcement of mistrust in councils and certain individuals, our Standing the Park group have decided the way forward is to have some of us stand for town, district, council seats. Absolutely none of us had ever envisaged the need to take such, such steps, but now it seems the right thing to do. Historically, we've had an abundance of left versus right, red versus blue, with a smattering alternative. A system where it has become the norm to have a top-down approach to decision-making. So what we are going to do is put forward a number of independent candidates that, if elected to town, district or both, will push hard for a bottom-up approach to decision-making in Thetford. As such, we will not, we will not be accountable to the whip or bound by party politics. One of our proposals discussed and agreed upon by all of us, and as we are representing the people in the truest sense, is that the fees traditionally paid to councillors for their services be paid into a secure account and held for the people of the town as a slush fund for those who may need help, situations such as the house fires a few months ago. All we need you to do now is to vote for us in your respective wards. We will not canvass or pester you on the doorsteps. What we will rely on now is for you, the people of Thetford, to spread the word. Consider this the first step in taking back your sovereignty. The, eh.
Mark, Mark, you've had your word, can we move on?
Oh, no, he might want to do it, no, no, no.
So now we have Thetford candidates, and we will announce the candidates to the respective wards once we finalize them.
Hi, um, I'm Sally Ludford and I now live in Watten, I did live in Thetford for many, many years. And might I say, we have the same lighting and cameras in Watten too, which is quite concerning. But my question to the councillors is, our government, who work for us and our council, who also work for us, should be doing the things that we want. My question to you is, if the government implements these twenty-minute zones, do you have to follow what they say?
Tom, no, eh, that's a delegated matter for, in this instance, the County Council to decide if they want to implement anything like, eh, the, the twenty-minute zones, all traffic matters, eh, you are decided in Norfolk.
I actually disagree with that, I, I think you do have, if, if they, they do want to have this all in place across the UK and across the world eventually, and if they say that you have to do it, you will have to do it, that's what I believe.
So as a, present legislation is, all traffic matters, you are the responsibility of Norfolk County Council? Absolutely and characteristically, I think, eh, as, as, I think there's a, a next tra- traffic consul in, in the room, you'll probably confirm that?
Got to be honest, I'm a bit suspicious, it's I left in two thousand and four, it's been a few sleep since then, so I've not got a clue. I can't help you out because I'm handyman, it's a pain though.
So just one more thing, if this has eventually come into play, we as Thetford and Watten and UK really do not want this in place. And my children live here, my granddaughter lives here and my little grandson, who's badly born in June, he'll be here too, I live in Watten, I will find it a struggle to get here to come and see them, give them a cuddle. Though my children, this not only affects me, it affects everybody and it will affect your lives too, and you need to think about that hard.
Okay, thanks very much, can we move on to the next speaker, please?
Hi, um, my name's Lynne Bond. Most of the questions that I had prepared have already been asked, but there's just one thing I might be a bit sore on the uptake. But if there are no plans to implement this in Thetford, what exactly is the trial going to involve?
Thank you, there, there is, there is no trial, there's no trial in Thetford, there's no trial proposed anywhere in Norfolk. We are, eh, you know, here to talk about something which isn't even being proposed to happen. That's the situation. Um, Tom's confirmed that, I've confirmed that, leader, that active leader of Norfolk County Council has confirmed that there are no proposals for a trial. It's, the motion that was adopted was to look at the concept and consider whether a trial might be appropriate. I don't know if we ever will get to a trial, but, you know, that's where we're at at the moment.
So categorically, then it's not going to be a trial in Thetford?
There's, it's a bit like Tom, we, we, there are, there are eighty-four members of Norfolk County Council, Jane and I are two of them. We are in a democracy, if a majority of Norfolk County Councils propose to do something in two years' time, that's a decision that they will make. I have given you an assurance that I will never vote for that.
I'm sure the people of Thetford's opinion counts more than Norfolk County councillors.
We can't, nobody has a crystal ball, things may change, but we can categorically say to them, I'm proposing now, that is an honest answer. Just, if I may, two further points that you made earlier, firstly about the whip. Town councillors are not whipped, they can vote however they feel, and if you attend a town council meeting, you will see people of different political parties all the same, voting every which way. Hanging baskets, public toilets, the market square are not party political issues. It's sixteen members of Thetford Town Council there to do what they feel is best, they are not whipped. And secondly, eh, good luck, eh, donating your allowance as a town councillor to a good cause. Town councillors are not paid, they are not paid a penny, they're, they're not, town councillors are not paid a penny, they are not paid expenses. It is a completely voluntary position, so I just want to be very clear, town councillors are not paid a voluntary basis.
Can I just be very quick, if I just clarify, town and district, district are paid, so there's eight. So we're putting eight through for town and district, so please don't disregard that last one, because districts are paid and it's the district money that will go into the slush fund, okay, so just clarify.
So if there's no trial, what do you think?
Yes, they are. Sorry, but I said, you, as town councillors, you will do this.
No, 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 you didn't listen to my speech, did you?
No, they never do.
I, I did try, I, I did try, but I got lost in the middle ground.
Can we slip the point about twenty-minute, um, neighbourhoods, please, can we have the next speaker?
Can everyone hear you back there?
Yeah.
So as the UK reporter for Rebel News, I've noticed that the mainstream media, ITV have got everything they need, even though the meeting hasn't finished, and I can only wonder what narrative they will spin as they've clearly not heard everything you have to say.
Excellent.
Now, Rebel News, one of the main things we've been covering is the fifteen-minute city concept, which is something that's been endorsed by the World Economic Forum, it's been modelled on the city of Ghent in Belgium, a very flat, modern city you could say, as it, as it was practically rebuilt at the end of the Second World War and was designed for things like lots of bikes. So in the UK, many of the fifteen-minute city proposals we have are the Canterbury Circulation Plan, traffic filtering systems in Oxford, the Cambridge congestion. traffic filtering systems in Oxford, the Cambridge Congestion Charge, livable neighborhoods in Bath and Bristol, and we have the ultra-low emissions zones. Basically, they are all the same thing under different nets. Now, one of the things I've heard here tonight is politicians, and I'm old enough to remember politicians would say things like, "Three weeks to flatten the curve," very honestly. Lots of these politicians, they always say, "Yes, you have a choice." But usually, the choice is, and they don't like to say this bit out loud, "Here are your choices. Do what we want, or we will fine you into poverty." So to round that off, can you categorically say, and I don't just mean fines with AMPR cameras for driving into areas, I mean in every single sense, can you categorically say there will be absolutely no charges or a war started on private vehicle owners with things like taxes or more places that are free parking to become paid parking or fines for simply driving? Can you categorically say now, on record, because there is still some media here, that you will not impose absolutely any financial restrictions on any private vehicle owner? Tom, thank you.
I'm gonna have to, eh, Mike's gonna have to protect him the way out of the, eh, out of the auditorium. Eh, no, I, I couldn't give you that reassurance, because I suspect, eh, as a, for example, there will be more on-street charging in future years than there is now. And one of the, you know, you, you'll appreciate the nuance in this. At the moment, with the internal combustion engine, eh, I don't know, you know, a litre of fuel is, whatever it is, one forty, eh, one pound forty. How much of that goes to the treasury in Bath and whatever? Probably about a pound. As we move towards electric cars, there's gonna be, eh, eh, you know, an awful big hole in the tax man's savings. So I suspect, eh, governments are gonna have to look at, how can we recoup some of that charge back? And, so I would say something like road user charging will probably happen within our lifetime, because petrol cars are gonna be banned from twenty thirty, give or take. So, so I, I couldn't give you that reassurance. That, that, that would be hypocritical of me. But you, you'll know that, because you've done your research and that's something that, you know, I, I suspect will happen absolutely within our lifetime.
But could, um, sorry, a quick one. Could Norfolk County Council on record agree that there will be no, nothing imposed by the county council on combustion engine private vehicle owners? Simply from your end, well, can you commit to not imposing any new charges? And I don't mean fuel costs or fuel duty, because that's, that's a national level. But on a local level, within the county council, can you tell everyone here of Thetford now, you will not impose a single penny on private vehicle owners simply for their right in, well, what I think is a free country, to drive wherever they please on public roads, which they already pay for through the tax?
Okay, next speaker, please.
I, I think there have been assurances that there are no plans of.
Good luck to you one more time.
I'm having to respond, and Jane may wish to comment as well. Can you have it on, on film service? In my opening remarks, I said, "If any future twenty-minute neighborhood proposals for Thetford seek to restrict movement, impose fines or otherwise curtail personal freedoms, then I would be totally against and I would vote strongly against." I, I can't speak for eighty-three other members of Norfolk County Council. I'm not the leader of the council, I don't run the county council. I can give you my honest answer as an individual, that I will not vote for that. I said it here on record twice, you can play it back, I will never vote for that.
But do the wishes of the people of Thetford get overruled by two people that sit in Bradford? Or Norfolk?
Okay.
So you've got no weight whatsoever?
No, sir, if you, if you want to speak, please join the queue. Next speaker.
Thank you. For those who don't know me, my name is Mark Taylor and I've been at Thetford. The district councillor, P D, I, a Thetford councillor, the minister. I do have a question for the panel, however, I just want to explain to the audience that it's only just taken me virtually eight years to understand how the council works. There's three levels. There's the lower level, parish town. There's the middle level, which is district, and there's the higher level, which is county. Now, all the power resides at the other two levels, the district and the county levels. Thetford City is in charge of the blooming lovely flowers and the toilets, and that's about as much power as we've got. Nobody gets paid at the Thetford level. Everybody gets paid at the next two levels of all. That is where all the decisions are made. Now, you've seen, we've only got two county councillors that represent Thetford. So it's very, very easy for higher levels of council to tell residents of Thetford what they're gonna do and how they're gonna do it. So you've got to start thinking about how you're gonna get the power back down to your level, because it's a lot of your money that is going to pay them at the higher level to tell you what to do and not think about anything that you're saying or telling them that you're worried about. So you need to start thinking about that. Now, eh, to my question, I think that the county councillors tonight are potentially not telling us the truth or are very naive. Now, I'm, I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say naive, because I know a lot of people in the audience and hear the words and hear you talking. You've all done the research. You know what is going on in the world right now. Potentially, the county councillors don't. And for those in the audience who don't know, and we're talking about how the higher levels of council push everything down, it's exactly the same in the world. Above governments, there's corporations, above corporations, there's other things. The UN is the focal point for everything at the minute. Now, they are something which you can all go and research, it's called Agenda Twenty-One. For various reasons, Agenda Twenty-One went backwards, I won't bore you with why, somebody would know. It's now called Agenda Thirty, and everything is being pushed down from Agenda Thirty. Your smart cities, all these fifteen and twenty-minute divagles, your U-Las. Everything's gonna be smart, it's all leading to your digital ID. You've heard the fellow that they've not heard about on the panel, Frank Schwellke, eh? You will own nothing and you'll be happy. The plan is for you to run everything digital, you will not be able to move. Somebody like me, I'll be in the Gulag, because they won't like me. I'll be lucky if I get two crickets a week to eat. You won't be getting your meat. It's all there. Do the research. Everything I'm saying is not conspiracy, it's all there. They are relying, the people around the world are relying on you not doing the research. Now, our councillors, who get paid good money, that's not, that's not the underbush. The higher levels, they get paid good money, and they have no incentive to do the research. That's why I'm accusing them tonight of being slightly naive. Now, the other thing we had tonight about potentially we've got down the mayors. I thought Liverpool. We've gotten the biggest cities like Liverpool, what we call the metro mayors. Now, the mayor's in effect become a dictator. However, did you know that all over the world for the last eight years? The mayors have been getting together and making policy decisions, which have been sent down from the UN, mired to this sort of dialogue rhetoric and questioning going on. So beware these big mayors, because all the power goes into one place and they won't allow any discussion and debate like this. So you have to be very, very aware of what's going on in this world at the moment. Naivety, hopefully, like yourselves who don't know, will get educated. So my question to the panel is, have you done any research on UN Agenda Twenty-One? Now, UN Agenda Thirty? How that leads into the fifteen-minute cities and the twenty-minute neighborhoods? I cannot believe that your lady's had some sort of moment from Damascus moment and just falls apart herself and talks between. But please, have you done the research is my question. Thank you.
Yeah, as, as I said, on, off the back of your concerns, I've read up on Agenda Twenty-Thirty. And it's, it's not relevant when it comes to the twenty-minute neighborhood. No, no, seriously, it, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't come into play.
You know this has been recorded, right?
I am.
You know this is a camera.
I don't, but it's true. It doesn't come into play. Okay, because, because the, the, from what I gather, the Agenda Twenty-Thirty, whatever those neighborhoods are, they're all about restricting people. But what, what I'm suggesting isn't, isn't that at all. It, it isn't that at all. It really isn't that at all.
Okay, I, I think we, we want to come back on that, yes.
All of a sudden, everybody in the audience, especially the people who own businesses, taxis, shops, have a look at what's happened in the legs of Oxford, where businesses are going down, taxis are suffering, all the small businesses, which are under attack, are suffering. The best thing that you can do, the, the councillors here at Tavon, it's not gonna happen on their watch, get the word off them on paper and get their personal names on that paper. And if your business goes down on their watch, you can attack them in their sodden ability, because they assured you it wouldn't happen. Do not go for the councillor to corporation, you go for them in their personal capacity. So if they tell you it's not gonna happen, if they tell you everything's gonna be all right, get that in writing off there. You can then, in the future, if it all goes wrong, have somebody to aim for. If they do not sign it, it is the corporation and you don't have to do anything the corporation tells you.
You stepped down for that? It goes through, you all stepped down.
Order. We have one more speaker, the lady in the green. I think the lady in the red has already spoken. So I'll take just one more speaker, which is the lady on the left. You're on the list, okay, go ahead.
I had no intention of speaking tonight, I'll be honest. But I've come here and I have done research and I'm more confused now than I was before I came here. You tell me it's not being considered as a trial for Thetford? Yet I have it here in the EDP, where it says, "Areas of Norfolk where major development is planned, where the twenty-minute neighborhood concept could be explored includes Attleborough, Thetford, Ratcliffe, North East of Norwich." So I am confused by that. I am confused also, when this is a second meeting, why, if there's eighty-three councillors, we have two here? Are, you ask, what do we want as Thetford people? I haven't lived in Thetford all my life and I am lucky not to have been ill. We all know health is a lottery. On a one occasion, when I did need an appointment, I waited six weeks. Now, this week, I have heard, for a telephone appointment, I will wait three and a half weeks. That is not acceptable. It's really not acceptable. There are so many things that Thetford doesn't have, and I love Thetford, living here all my life. I was at school with you, Mike, you'll remember. Uh, and Tom, you know, we can't even have a rugby club for young children here. We had to travel to Wyndham for a rugby club, okay? I, I used to work in Barclays Bank, we don't have a bank anymore. So my job now is out of town. Lots of people are forced to work out of town, because the jobs are not here for us. I don't have any questions, I'm not sure I would get my answers that I want. But I am truly, truly worried that we haven't made much, uh, progress. What I would say, Tom, is I've been really, really grateful for that letter coming to Thetford Council, because I can assure you, if I am fined, I will not have the money to pay it. And therefore, either I'm gonna end up in prison or I'm gonna need to quote your letter, Tom, to say, "Thank you very much, it's not hap-"
I'm going to take my final, um, uh, comment quickly from the floor. And then I'm going to Jeff Neely, and then I'm going to ask Jane to close the meeting.
Sure, right, yeah. My name's Luke Collins. Um, I wrote something down, I've crossed a lot of things off, because I think it's already been asked. Um, but I'll start with this, so for as long as I can remember, public services, not only in Thetford, but the whole of the UK, have seen cutbacks to resources due to a lack of funding, public use, or because they wasn't generating enough income. This ranges from public transport, education, police and local businesses. Knowing that historically, we have had to cut back on resources, it makes me wonder why this time around it would be any different. In a document you posted called "Safe Sustainable Development", you say, "I plan to," and I quote, "Increase and improve walking, cycling and public transport, encouraging a shift away from car use." You also say that emphasis needs to be placed on encouraging a shift away from private car. Although at first I can imagine there will be an increase in the amount of cyclists and walkers around the town, what will your plans be when the novelty wears off? Is it realistic to expect people to walk and cycle in the rain or on a cold winter's day? And what will happen if you begin struggling to fund public transport for similar reasons to what we're seeing in the past? I believe that this is where our concerns will start coming to fruition, leading to higher council tax, roadblocks and travel restrictions that generate more income in order to fund these resources. One reason we justify the need to move away from private vehicles is because it has created local air quality problems. But where is the evidence for this? That statement alone is very vague and there's no proof of this on the Norfolk County Council website that I can find. A lot of you have made it clear that you're against travel restrictions and I hope that you all stick to your word. The only problem is, you're not in permanent positions and there's nothing to say that anyone who replaces you won't feel differently. And although we have a saying who represents us in the council for votes in elections, we never elected anybody to do this and yet, here we are. I've seen a lot of arguments online about this topic and I actually believe if we all step back, that we'd agree with each other. Although the media and others might paint us out to be meander fools who want to see this town's demise, I don't believe that there's anybody in here today that would be against the idea of seeing their town thrive and wouldn't want better resources in the town, that there's a way to go about it and this isn't the right, right way. Vice versa, it's likely that even those who disagree with us would not want to be in a world where their, is, their travel is restricted. It might just be the case that they can't see or imagine things ever getting so bad. I just want to say, surely, had you all been confident that we would be for this kind of idea, um, you would have done a, a public vote.
Okay, thank you very much. Could we move on to Jeff Neely?
Good evening. Hi, Sally, yes. Well, I just wanna, yeah, do this. Um, just gonna recap what Mark said about the twenty-minute cities and he went into about the digital ID and that. Um, the thing I've got a problem with, you see, with the twenty-minute cities, smart cities and the, obviously I'm gonna touch on Oxford here, where they're dividing it into six zones, um, hundred passes out, twenty passes in in twenty twenty-four. Now, the thing is, if this does come here and they're stating it's not gonna come here, my view is, the way it is, it's in a partial lockdown, because we're being restricted. And the problem with that, obviously, is the freedom of movement. But we don't want that, you see, we wanna be allowed to go about our business, doing our own thing, without someone telling us, "You can't go around there, it's gonna affect people's livelihood." But going on from that, the way I see it, we're settled in a little partial lockdown, the next two or three years is gonna be something, because there's gonna be a big crash. The system's gonna go bust, the banks are gonna go bust, cash is gonna disappear. This is the problem, it's gonna happen, you know, and we're gonna face blackouts. Now, on fake stream media, they're gonna preempt it and say, "Look, we're gonna get cyber attacks." Probably blame the Russians, but it's by design, this is by design, that this is happening and it will happen, the crash will come, we'll face blackouts. Could be a month, could be two months, could be six months, who knows? So as a little side bet, I suggest you start- So as a little side bet, I suggest you stock it up on food and water and things that you'll possibly need, because this crash will come. Following that, I hope when the lights do go out, we don't see our government, Rishi Sunak, because he wants to push the central bank digital currency. He absolutely wants to push that, and this is based on a social credit score. When the internet came out all them years ago, they have been tracking our social behaviours on the phones and things, and laptops and whatever, they've been actually tracking us as a social, I mean, you've only gotta look at China, it's actually, you've only gotta look at Israel, and actually, it's been ratified in law in the USA by that awful bloke Joe Biden. So actually, this is happening, and what it is, it's a surveillance coin, it's gonna track your every spend on a One World Bank. That's where we're gonna end up, with a One World Bank, One World Government. So they're gonna actually decide whether they're gonna allow you to eat red meat or not, and if they don't, they'll just stop you eating that, they might even ban you for a week. If you slander someone on Facebook, you might be doing it in jest, but no, they'll see it as bad, and they'll dock you points, you know? You might even think, well, I'm just gonna go and get some tyres for my car, and they'll go, hang on, your carbon emissions, you know, I'm sorry, we're not gonna let you out now, you know? But at the end of the day, they need something to blame, so they're gonna blame it on the climate, they're gonna blame it on the carbon emissions and things like that. But the thing is, with this central bank digital currency, and bear it in mind, just for those who don't know, there's over a billion surveillance cameras around the world at the moment, and plus, you've got your tracking on your phone, even Alexa knows what's going on, even your doorbell, video doorbell ones, they're all tracked there, and your new cars that are coming out are gonna be fitted with cameras, and by 2025, there's gonna be sixteen cameras in each car, so you better watch out where you get up to, because... It's after the wash yet, so I can get away with that. But yeah, so moving on, the thing with the central bank digital currency, they need something else to go with it. Mark mentioned the digital ID, and that's what it is, the facial recognition, it's all over the place, it's even in the polling stations now, for next time you wanna vote, so I wouldn't bother voting. So yes, they need that digital ID to work with the blockchain, to get the central bank digital currency up and running. So you're gonna see, and what they're gonna do eventually, with your apps and with your Facebook, whatever it is, they won't need your login, your passwords, it's literally the facial ID that they'll need to get everything running. So when you say the fifteen-minute city, it will be smart cities, it will be connected to the grid, it will be connected to 5G, it literally will be connected, you will be in a digital concentration camp, a digital ID prison. And like I said, if these twenty-minute smart cities come in, so you're already partially locked down, you're virtually, well, it's end of, really, game over, if that happens that way. So unless you really know, and like Mark said, the guys, if they haven't done their research and looked ahead of what's going on, then really, they need to, they need to, because this is detrimental. Like I said, the next two to three years, it will go bust, cash will go, and it will disappear, you know, and we will be in a digital prison, if Rishi Sunak gets his way. But if we stop things like this, even though they're saying they're not gonna happen, if we stop things like this and get ahead before it actually happens, we'll have a chance. We've all gotta come together, we all need to do that little bit more research, you know? Ignorance of reality isn't a good strategy for survival, you've got to look into things. Now, you know, we get called conspiracy theorists, who cares? At the end of the day, we are telling you what's going on, it's your problem if you're not looking into it. Maybe not you people here, because you may realise what's going on, but in general, when people just say, oh, you're talking rubbish, they don't look into it, that is the problem we're facing. So people need to look into it. There are reasons for everything in this world, there are reasons why these twenty-minute cities and that came out, is because it's the start of what I would say is a lockdown situation. And if you've got the digital concentration camp, the ID, everything in place, who's to say they won't throw in a quiet lockdown, throw it all in, as in a pandemic, and there you go, game over? So we've really, really got to try and do our research, but stop these things happening. So I don't blame you guys there, and how much you do know, but I suggest you look into it. And, you know, I agree with what you said earlier, Mark, and the stuff there, but obviously, we've moved around now, so I just really hope what you're saying, you've said tonight, that you totally disagree with the twenty-minute cities and that and zones. But as we know, the decision doesn't make it with the four of you, it's the whole of your county council, you know, and the fact that you four turned up is commendable, but disappointing that Adi Proctor hasn't turned up, and the rest of the other team, really, you know? I would say maybe it's got held up, maybe there's a roadblock somewhere or restriction that he can't get in. Sorry, Andrew, what was that? Yeah, oh, you were gonna turn up, but don't worry about it, no, that's fine, we're nearly finished now. But yeah, anyway, I jest, but these are the things that will happen if we let them. So thank you very much for this. Oh, just before I finish, just before I finish, I want to end, if I get it right, with a quote from the great Thomas Paine. He said, "I prefer peace, but if trouble must come..." No, I'm nearly there. "But if trouble must come, let it be at my side, so that my children live in peace." Thank you very much.
Can you come up with a man who can make some complete comments and close the meeting?
John, just very, very quickly, can I just, this has been a little bit of a different type of meeting to what people thought they were gonna go. From our point of view, it structured exactly what we wanted. They came with nothing, we've educated them, thank you.
So thank you, thank you all ever so much for attending, it is appreciated. We are representatives, duly elected, democratically elected, to listen to all of our residents' views, so that includes everybody here, but also the other nearly thirty thousand residents of Thetford. We represent all their views and have to take those into account. So I'm really grateful that we have all come together, as Jeff rightly said, to hear those fears, those concerns, also those hopes and aspirations, and that's incredibly important too. So I agree as well, everyone here has a responsibility to engage. Engagement is a two-way street. I have had more emails than you, Terry, a lot more emails than you, on both sides of the argument, and that's the challenge for us as elected individuals, that we do have to understand all the viewpoints and take those on board. So thank you all very much for your time. As I stated in an email to my councillor colleagues over a month ago, this is the start of a conversation, we need to keep communicating, and that's what I'd urge you to do tonight, keep communicating with us, please, thank you.